The council summary that says for illustrative purposes only, the Marina Enterprise Fund is presented here in the same format. So you see that $2 million?
Twenty-five.
In the Marina column?
Oh, the 2,794.
Under capital expenses.
Okay, that's 2.8.
No, 2,794 underneath Marina Fund on this page, Scott. Are you on this page?
Wait a minute, we're not.
Next to last column, Marina Fund, 2,794.
So on this schedule, to illustrate how much the city is proposing to spend on capital outlay, we're including the 2 million Marina, most of which of that is the public dock. But on the pie chart graph, it's generated solely from the budget itself. And in the budget, the capital on the Marina is not an expense. It's an expenditure of ca-
Because it's in the Enterprise Fund.
That's correct. So that's the $2 million swing there.
So we're the Enterprise Fund here without the Enterprise Fund on the pie chart?
This is treating the Marina as a governmental fund. On the pie chart, the Marina is being treated as a Enterprise Fund. See up there, it says Marina operations, no capital.
Yep.
That's the-
It includes depreciation in there, right?
Correct. It would also include depreciation.
Okay. Scott, does that do it or not necessarily?
No, it does. It would just, I wonder if, just for outside view, it would be helpful to record, just have them agree here or something, but that explains it.
Or some kind of footnote here to-
Yes.
-show the difference. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide is in your packet as well. This is the summary of personnel calls for the last three years, our forecast, fiscal '24, and then three years further out. And John, if you've got a question here, this is head count and numbers.
And just to clarify, the packet includes the full assessment. So it's five years out, five-year actuals, and then five-year forecast. We just reduced it for illustrative purposes so that it wouldn't be too busy to look at in this slide.
So I'm just trying to justify these numbers in my head. And I don't know how you built it up. Did you build it up by person and from the bottom up? Okay. I'm just looking at the high level. And if we look at forecast 23, if we look at full year, fiscal year '23, we're included probably $450,000 of a one-time payment. So if I back that out and then put 2.5% on that, I'm at 5.6 million without additional three heads. So it seems like we're light. And then I tried it a different way. So I went where we budgeted last year, and we did a 2.5% in the cost of living, so I added that to that. Then initial 2.5 for FY '24, and I end up at the same place. I'm thinking we're short money in here based on, based on the, and not counting for the additional heads or something somewhere.
I'm happy to run it again, but these numbers are built on a detailed level. So they're just a separate schedule with everybody's current rate and, sorry. One thing that might be impacting that analysis you're doing is there are some, and have been and will be, some high-level positions that are leaving. So high-paid people leaving. Their replacements will not be compensated at that same level. So in a couple of cases, that can be significant.
Yeah. And then I'm looking at it even on a unit basis. So we're going from 104, and I realize that has some of the built into it down to 96. I just think you probably just look at it, and if it's right, it's right. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me just looking at the numbers. That's all I'm saying.
I'll be happy to run it again.
Because Debbie, what was the one-time cost of living? It was 500 or 600,000, wasn't it?
It was-
450.
5,000 per employee.
Right.
Plus benefits, all right, loaded?
Of course, yes. So I was thinking it was more like a $500,000 number.
Well, if you take, if you take $5,000 times 92, I assume that's the number, it's 460,000.
But then you have to load it.
Fully load it.
No, but I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at the salary and wage line, not the loaded line.
Yeah.
So my math's done on that salary and wage line.
Mm-hmm.
We can run it again.
Yeah. I can get somebody to check it for me.
Thanks.
Other questions on this? Again, this is just pulling out the personnel piece of the expense side.
It does, it does assume a full year of the new PR and tourism coordinator position, which you can see in the transfers in description, that we're taking a portion of that from the 30% given to the CBB. We're transferring that into the general fund. It also assumes a full-time code enforcement officer, which was approved last month, includes the short-term rental compliance officer, which is being recommended by the committee. Council will be voting on that next week. And it also includes half a year of a potential financial analyst position that we, again, very beginning the conversation about, you know, what that would look like, but wanted to have some placeholder in the budget to allow us to do that in the event that we continue to go in that, in that direction. So that, that is the increase in headcount from what you can see from previous years to what we're projecting in FY '24. It does not have any, it does not assume any additions to the fire department. We'll talk a little bit about that, what we do with the paramedic program, which includes additional headcount potentially as one of the options, but it's not built into this budget as of yet until we get direction from council.
Desiree, with the portion of the tourism and PR coordinator position that's paid for out of the 30% that would normally go to Explore Charleston CBB, is that deducted from what we give them upfront or is it sort of a?
Yes, that's a plan.
Okay. So that's less the, less whatever portion would be dedicated to our coordinator?
We receive quarterly payments, so we would, you know-
Okay.
-distribute it that way when we give them the total payment, their quarterly payments.
Scott, quick question on the retirement. The retirement looks like it's about 22% of salaries. And I remember, as I recall, the state had been increasing us like a point per year to make up for the shortfall.
It's leveling now, man.
Okay, so will we be staying at that 22 for the foreseeable future?
I haven't received any indication from the state that they plan on increasing it.
Okay.
That's the hope, though.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Probably not believable, but that's at least where we, that's only guidance we have today.
That's right.
So again, from a high-level budget expense side, here are the projects that are included. The Phase 3 drainage, completion of 36 Outfall Avenue, that's obviously already funded. Phase 3 drainage start 41st Avenue, it's funded by the Office of Resiliency. Our budget includes 29,000 for permitting for that particular project. Small drainage projects identified by the comprehensive plan, half a million. At the Marina, public dock renovation and green space, 1.9 million using ARPO tourism and Marina funds. Marina dredging, design and permitting, in this fiscal year, we've just got the $50,000. The construction would be funded by a $1.5 million state budget grant. T-Dock improvements, this number's kind of a placeholder, if you will, of 400,000. We had voted, I guess, last year to spend up to 400. I don't know that the number's going to be anywhere near that, but we're waiting on updated numbers on needed repairs on that. Go ahead, Desiree.
And to that point, this is something that I wanted to clarify, so y'all know, we included in, we have it in FY '23 since the assignment of the lease and the addition of a new, a new partner there. They have both the Marina restaurant and the new Marina operator have asked us to hold on that until, you know, Schuler and his team have an opportunity to get in and make the improvements and operate it before we start spending money in that, for that dock. And it may be that between the two of them, you know, that dock, as y'all know, it's split evenly between the Marina operator and the restaurant. Whether they have other ideas, want to contribute additional funds to make other additional improvements above and beyond what we are responsible for. And at the time, back when we were developing FY '23 budget, ATM, who is under contract with the city for the Marina design, indicated that about 200 to 250,000 should cover the scope of improvements that I think the city wanted to do, felt comfortable doing at that time, even though the placeholder that we included in the budget was a not-to-exceed number. If the intent is not to spend 400,000 and we can make the improvements with 200 and 250,000, then that, I think that's the number we put in the budget, just not managing expectations of the tenants, of what the city's willing to spend. It would be my recommendation. So to that effect, I've asked Kirby Marshall to revise that number and just tell us what it would take to do a rehabilitation of the existing structure. And that would, right now, we have 200,000 in the latest draft of the budget that you, that we shared with you last week.
200 is in here?
200 is in here.
Not 400.
Not 400.
Yeah, I would support, maybe we leave it at the 2, yeah.
Okay, and we, by the second draft, we should have a refined number. So it may be a little bit over 2, but that was, that was the direction we got last year.
And Desiree, with the collaboration between the tenants, are they wanting to go through an entire summer season and just sort of look at that with everything open at the Marina and judge as to what further improvements, if any, they think need to be made?
I don't necessarily think if it's to identify additional improvements that would need to be made. I think it's more just operationally how it works.
Okay.
With, with where it is now. Y'all know we have a permit that allows the dock to be pushed back, pushed for, towards the inner coastal waterway. We're not, that's not what we're planning on doing anytime soon, just based on the condition of the, of the dock. But it may be that they're willing to partner to pursue that and find alternative ways of funding that in addition to the city's contribution. I'm actually having a meeting with all of them next week to, you know, start putting some, some structure to that conversation and help us plan for FY '24. Not necessarily the amount. I think council was clear into what, you know, the city's willing to commit to that, to those improvements, but get the ball rolling or whatever it is that we need, since we have a permit that's, it's going to expire in a few years.
Right.
Okay, so we have 200 in the budget. Scott, your recommendations kind of stay there. Is that others' feelings?
Yeah, I mean, the, I think all of the discussions we've had with any of the tenants down there have indicated that even 200, we can do a lot with 200, and we could even maybe ratchet that back, and maybe we ought to take that opportunity to, if we've got other funding challenges, to scoop whatever we can.
All right, beach access enhancements and beach preservation. This first one is a placeholder as well. We're waiting on a refined number. Permitting for future shoal management and beach renourishment project of 700,000. By the time we get to second draft of budget or whatever we're going to approve, we'll have a more definitive number there. But the idea is in the next fiscal year, go ahead and get permitted for something. I think Desiree, the permits are good for five years from a renourishment standpoint, so we can have it on hand for whenever our next time is.
And it could be extended after, for an additional five more years. But my goal with this, you know, pursuing permitting, even though we're, we don't anticipate having a beach renourishment project until maybe two to three years, is should something happen, we have a major hurricane, and we are able to secure funding from FEMA to restore the beach, having a permit on hand just facilitates everything. Facilitates us getting funding and just the engineering of it all. So we know that permitting for these major projects sometimes can take two to three years. We want to start that sooner rather than later, and we had it projected for FY '24 for the last two years.
And how long are the permits usually good for?
Five years.
They're good for five years. You can extend it for an additional five if you need to.
Okay, so what you're anticipating 10 years out, what we might need, up to 10 years out?
Yes, well, we, we know, we know, we've, we've done two big renourishment projects already. One was in 2008, the other one was in 2018. So we know that we're already on a 10-year cycle. So we are anticipating in 2028, at the, at the earliest or maybe latest, to do, to have a, to have the need to do a project. So we want to start the permitting process sooner.
Good.
Yeah, if the shoal would get here, that would be good. It's out there.
Well, this assumes pursuing two different permits. One is the shoal management piece, and that would allow, we've done that, we did that in 20, 2004, I believe. Yeah, right before the first big renourishment project. And that would be a small-scale intervention essentially for, on the beach. And that, doing that may extend the life of the project. We may not need to do a beach renourishment in 2028. That, that would be the goal, if we can at least manage that incoming shoal in a way that can extend the life of that project. But we don't know. I mean, talk about dynamic, the beaches.
Next item is beach access pass, boardwalks and foot bridges. You know, the last two or three years, I guess, we've had $250,000 in each year, just to kind of start knocking them out. Did 34A this year. Just a quick reminder, we have a request in at the state level for 2.5 million to take care of 10 beach access pass. So hopefully we'll hear on that relatively soon.
Is there any way we can use that for some, some other uses as well, like golf cart multi-use paths or something like that as well?
The request was specific to beach access pass.
So we can't?
Yeah, I mean, it's really more public-focused than something that might just be for residential use. Maybe both, obviously, but the, the request was very specific.
Are you referring to the, the request the city has made to the state budget, or are you referring to the $250,000 in the beach preservation?
The $250,000 that, whatever this pot of money would come from. Can it be used for anything like multi-use paths? I'm trying to see whether it's specifically beach access paths.
We could identify from other funds. The only challenge with the beach preservation fee fund, it is restricted by code, restricted for beach maintenance, beach access. So we're more limited here, but we can certainly find, you know-
I'm not asking you to find.
Other tourism funds to do that, but not, not this pot, not this pot of money.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Next item, under Public Services and Facilities. You can see a number of items listed here. Outdoor fitness court at the rec center, improvements to the dog park, Desiree talked, touched on a minute ago. Caterpillar trash loader, we approved, or talked about at our workshop. Structural assessment for City Hall, and let's pause there. Amy, if you can go to slide 53 in the budget or 56 in your packet, whichever, whichever place you're looking at it, in your packet, you'll see we've got four options listed currently. The first option are repairs that really need to happen to City Hall today.
It keeps moving.
So the first item is kind of taking care of what's absolutely needed, 350,000 rough numbers. I think that's probably pretty light based on what's on that list. Another option would be repairs and reconfiguration. You see, we've got $1 million in fiscal '25. Want to talk about pulling that back to this current fiscal year. A complete renovation and expansion of roughly 2 million. And the last option is really what we had initially budgeted for this year of 250,000 to, to have a structural review of this building and make sure the bones are good before we did any type of additions or renovations on it, just to make sure we have good structure under us before we go there.
Has anybody talked about where you would expand?
There's a little bit of room to your left, my right, we could go to. There's some reconfiguration we could certainly do. But I think, Douglas, if I remember right, either way, we're already maxed out from a setback, aren't we? Am I remembering that right or not?
Yeah, I think you're correct. The only real option is to go towards OverHarbor.
How far?
At least kind of the back of the steps, 15 feet-ish, 20 feet-ish that way.
How tall is this building?
It's under 40 feet.
I know that, but if I reconfigured the roof-
You can't go up.
You can't go up? Even if you reconfigured the roof and make it flat?
I think there's just a height requirement.
Yeah, I mean, if, I think you said put a completely flat roof on it.
Like a lot of hotels on the front beach.
Got it, yeah.
And it's just way out there.
Don't you take the measurement from the street?
Yeah.
Because we sit down from the street.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, you have a little-
We don't have much space, yeah. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, we did talk about this in the administrative committee meeting, and we're clearly out of space in here, and that was driving the, the discussion. But I thought option four was, Mr. Mayor, was more, to do more than just the look at the bones and the structure. I thought it was to put together a plan of options on how we could refigure, reconfigure the building so we could make some decisions going forward, like what option we would take.
That's, that's the plan. The plan is to have somebody do an assessment of the building and then develop some options based on need. You know, we know we need to replace the elevator. We know we need, we need to install a new roof. And then just give us a rough order of magnitude of cost based on expansion, just reconfiguration-
Yeah.
-for you all to consider, and that's the, that's the 250.
So are we thinking that we could do more in, in fiscal year '24 than just do that? In other words, do construction as well?
Yeah, John, a real quick conversation, I guess, yesterday and today. So the public safety building, I think it was a four-to-five-month-ish, this, this particular 250 line item. So we thought, you know, if we could launch that this summer, if we could get somebody to turn it quickly for us, and you, in theory, could be ready to do something in January of this fiscal year if we wanted to. So yeah, that, that was a thinking. Not, not wait a whole another year plus, because again, you know, we're hiring these positions right now and are essentially out of space. So I think, I think the thought was, let's do something quicker if we can.
Is there an expectation that for 250,000, we're going to get full design documents and architectural? I mean, that seems like a pretty big-ticket item for planning and design.
Again, that's a placeholder with kind of working through our options, talking to architects that we've talked, we've worked for in the past, worked with in the past, and trying to refine that number. But we really don't, we really don't know, right? I mean, that's the key. We want to put some money in the budget. Obviously, it has to be a smart and reasonable budget, and that's what we're working. This is, again, first, first draft of the budget that we put together. But yeah, the, the goal would be to have something in place immediately, you know, start working on it. You know, my, my recommendation would be that we follow the same process we did with the public safety renovation, where we had a design-build team. So we issue an RFP, get a design-build team in place. They work on the design together with the contractor, and then we don't have to rebid to get a contractor. You've, you've already selected them at, at the beginning of the process. It's much more efficient, and that would allow us to start construction potentially earlier. With this building, we're not restricted, as we are with most of our projects, where we have a very short construction window because we're trying to minimize impact during the season. We don't have that, we wouldn't have that issue here, which would allow us to work, you know, beginning of the year, and even if it migrates into the season, we would. And our, you know, a high level, we're looking at potentially expanding city council chambers. My vision is really consolidating both the building department and the city hall, general government upstairs. We're already, we've already connected, you know, in, in, in many ways, and I think we would have a lot of operational efficiencies if we have everybody on the same floor, have a landing place for the community to go in, you know, for any need, for building permits or licenses or court. And, you know, potentially down, reconfigure the area, the first floor with a bigger council chambers. You know, we see how many times we've had standing-room-only here, potentially having areas for the community to have meetings, you know, have a, a space that we can offer to the community for meetings. So it's, it, we're not, it's not, it's not a wild idea. We just need a few, a few additional offices for the people that we're hiring. We're, we're pretty maxed out already.
And I think, Scott, to your question, I mean, for 250, it's not construction-ready plans by any stretch. I think it's, you know, where John was, make sure the bones are good, give us some design options, you know, what the IOP setback rules are, and let us see what could happen. Jimmy?
That number, that 250, to me feasibly could go up if it's the will of council to get this on a faster track.
Yeah.
I think I suggested pulling in the construction part. That's the million next, in the next column, Jimmy.
I think you'd pull in the million from '25 to '24. And to John, your question too, I just, you know, best case, you try to plan this stuff out. I mean, boy, if we could put a shovel in the ground in January, I think it'd be great, personally. You know, once we see what options are available here, and, you know, I just think from a resident experience or visitor experience standpoint, to kind of have one spot to come into City Hall on and redirect people. Do you have commentary, Mr. Ward?
You know, mayor's office.
Mayor, mayor's closet.
You know.
So I think a lot of work to happen here, but-
And, and, you know, the other thing to think about, and we'll talk a little bit more as we look at some other initiatives, the park, outsourcing parking management across the board, they've asked, all the, you know, every company assumes having an office space for their staff to answer questions and to just do the parking management. So that's another person that we would have to find space at City Hall to, to accommodate. Another point to make, too, is as we go along the planning process of whatever happens with this building, a consideration will need to be made is, you know, can we continue to work in this location while the improvements are being done, or is there some kind of relocation? When we did the public safety building, y'all, y'all recall, we had some trailers that we had to bring in. So there's just, you know, there are just other considerations that, that we would need to include as part of the overall budget of, of a project like that.
Yes, there's more to, to it as well. I don't think the parking management firm has to be in this building. I don't know whether there's any room over in the public safety building. It might be better for them to be over there with the kind of work that they do. I don't know. We can't answer that certainly today. And I'm just wondering, I wish Kevin were here, because I think design fees are, for projects like this, might be 15, 10 to 15% of the budget for the construction. So if that's the case, 250 might be a little bit low, thinking of the planning and design together for that. But we could deal with that later if you want.
Yeah, we're going to pull the, I think, Scott, to your point, I think we ought to pull the million back in to fiscal '24 from '25. Maybe by the time we get to second draft of budget, we'll have a more definitive number on a, on a design cost.
Yeah.
Couple other items here, real quick. Public Works and Recreation, vehicle replacement in public safety, the exhaust systems at both fire stations. That was budgeted for this fiscal year, but we're just pushing that to the next fiscal year. Emergency vehicle access, we've talked about at the county park. Some other replacements, truck replacements and vehicle replacements. Administration, we've got built in a 2.5% merit-based adjustment. You can see what that number is. We, you recall, when this council first got seated, we implemented the effects of the wage and comp analysis, which was a little bit old at that point already. So now we're three years into that particular study, and if you have followed some of the headlines that are going on around the Low Country, there are some crazy compensation numbers being thrown around. I don't know if people are doing what we did in the first of last year and just catching up a little bit, or if it's kind of a reset. So I, you know, we, we made a commitment as a council when we did the wage and comp study three or four years ago to refresh it periodically, and I think it's probably time to do that, given what's gone on from an inflation and headline standpoint. So it's a $15,000 number, just to refresh that this year. We've talked about the new positions and the other pieces we'll keep in from prior years, grant writing and management services, traffic, traffic engineering assistance, lobbyists, and the short-term rental compliance software. We've all talked about those.
Just for clarification, the new hires, is that three or four positions that you're talking about?
So the, so we, we're talking about four different positions, but for FY '24-
Three and a half.
Once, once already started, the PR tourism coordinator, code enforcement, we're actually in the process of interviewing folks. STR coordinator role, you all will have an opportunity to approve that job description next week, and it's, that is the will of council. After that approval, we can go ahead and get started the hiring process for that. The new one that we are just starting to, to talk about and conceptualizes, the finance analyst, which is only a six-month impact in FY '24.
So it's four roles total.
But it's also to be determined, once you get an STR coordinator in place, to determine whether you even need that position or not later on, correct?
Well, a finance director.
Finance, that's what I'm talking about, the Finance Director. All right, can I ask, on the undergrounding utility lines program back up at the top up there, $175,000, is that the half that we contribute?
That's our budget cost.
That's our, okay. And Dominion would, you know, for whatever project we do for that, would, the other half would come from Dominion?
That's right. And you, some of you may recall, there was a list that Dominion had come to us with, a priority list, if you will. I think there were five or six projects, Desiree, if I remember right, and we decided, you know, at that time on that council, to put in $175,000 placeholder for each year. I think the one we just completed, our particular cost on that undergrounding was 30-ish?
30,000.
30,000, where Dominion was 30 also.
And we'll need to go back and resort our priorities on those other recommendations, too.
I think the next project was at the Marina, and that one is certainly bigger than a breadbox, and I think we just need to have some more conversations about reprioritizing that, potentially, or just revisiting that list, sorry.
No, no, you're correct. There were five projects, and we've actually, you know, dusted that off, sent it to Dominion Energy again, and asked them to review and make sure the estimates from back in 2020 were still accurate, and if there are some other, other locations that we can include to that list. And our goal is, once that's been reviewed, to bring it before your Public Services and Facilities Committee to just discuss and identify, is the list of priorities that we worked on a couple of years ago still valid, or do we want to reprioritize those? So that's, that's just a placeholder. Again, back to our original schedule, we're going to look at the Marina, but that's just a lot, and we just need to reevaluate that project.
These are small projects or new initiatives or changes from fiscal '23, and you can see a quite, the laundry list here, Desiree, I don't know if you want to highlight, I'll just highlight a couple real quick. The second one, the City Bot, that is one that many municipalities use to interact and communicate with their residential population. That is a definite need for us, in my opinion. Our employee engagement pieces, we're shifting gears on how we do the palm tree trimming around the island. We'll do that annually, as opposed to a third each year. Some additional holiday lightings and costs there, Desiree, I don't know, what else you want to, do you want to highlight or anything?
So, you know, here, we try to include just of the, just smaller projects, some that are new, some that were changing, I guess, the way that we operationally do them. I would highlight, you know, the tuition reimbursement program. We have $56,000 requested by city employees. And for employee engagement, we have the annual appreciation event. That number has been consistent since we started it four years ago. The holiday party, if the city wanted to continue that, we rebudgeted $25,000. Other engagements, smaller engagements throughout the year, we have a placeholder for $5,000. T-shirt sponsorship for the IOP cleanup crew, this is new. This is, came as a request from this group that, as y'all know, volunteer over 1,000 hours every year in collecting trash around the island, and they're requesting a sponsorship to be able to purchase t-shirts that they give to their volunteers, get them to buy in, and, you know, you'd be surprised how exciting people get with a t-shirt. So I think that's, I think that's a, would be a nice touch for the city to sponsor. July 4th fireworks.
How about breach-inlet boat ramp?
Oh, I'm sorry, breach-inlet boat ramp improvements. So $50,000, this is to replace the gate. That area is pretty heavily silted in. We actually are trying, you know, having conversations with the dredger that's right there, working for the boat ramp Marina folks, to see if we can piggyback on their permit and their contract to clean that, to clean that boat ramp. It's frankly unusable, as it is right now, particularly at low tide, and we advertise it as a, an amenity for residents. You can, you can buy a key, but we consistently hear, you know, you shouldn't be advertising it because it's not usable.
Well, it's not just the silt, but it's the angle of the ramp. It's always been that way forever. People have never been able to use it. I just, you know, I had, you know, questions about $50,000. It seems like to me it costs a lot more than that. To make that usable, I mean, that's a really steep ramp. Has that been addressed?
So we actually had a meeting with Kirby Marshall last week onsite with them, and that's where we stumbled upon the contractor that's doing the work there, and they were very agreeable, and while they're there to do the work that we, that we may need to clean it up, to just rudge it. Kirby believes that it's in pretty good shape, other than the silt. So I've asked, I've asked him to put together a proposal for an assessment, so that we can just confirm what might need to be done.
Yeah, there's no question about that. I'm just worried about the ramp itself.
Okay.
If it need to be completely redone.
I didn't get the impression, but we'll definitely confirm that.
Be the first time that I can remember it would have been usable.
So 4th of July fireworks, we've increased that, 10,000. We have updated numbers from the vendor. Fireworks are now more expensive. Resident Eco Tour outings, this is an initiative that we started last year with Coastal Expeditions, where we offer throughout the season free outings for IOP residents from the public dock. We are proposing continuing that. It was very popular last year. Most of the outings were completely booked within a few hours of having them being released. So I think it was a great opportunity to highlight the public dock and kind of get people who may not be boaters to use this new amenity at the Marina.
I just have one question, and that is, do you have records of who is using it now? Is it the same people over and over again, or are we getting a variety of people, and it actually is introducing people to the, new people to the dock?
Through the outings, through this, yeah, so we had asked the Coastal Expeditions, so the registration goes directly through them. Because it became really popular, we limited the amount of outings that one person could sign up ahead of time. They could be added to a waitlist, so if people didn't show up or cancel, that they could participate. But we limited to one, to one per season for residents, so that we can expand how many residents actually have an opportunity to, to participate. But I think at the beginning, we had a couple people that signed up for all of them, and we went back to them and said, hey, do you mind, you know, it's the first year that we're doing it, we want to make sure more people have the ability to experience it, and nobody had any issue with it, but we would be, we would limit it, you know, as part of the application process.
Did we have pretty good success when someone canceled to be able to backfill with the waiting list? I know that we had some, early on, we had some issues there.
We did, we, and that's something that we're going to try a little bit different this time. You know, we, we ask people to cancel at least 48 hours ahead of time. Their own policy is if you don't cancel within 24 hours, you're charged the entire cost of the outing. So what we're going to do now is maybe charge a dollar, just so that we can have a way of recovering if we don't cancel, and then we don't have the ability to, to have somebody from the waitlist. If they cancel ahead of time, we'll have a waitlist to contact, but if they just don't show up, so for no-shows, we'll have an opportunity to, because we still have to pay for it.
Yeah, let's, let's keep moving here.
I just have one request before we get off the Building Department and General Government. We had had a, I think in the prior budget, there was a $35,000 placeholder for, it was, it was deemed for potential software package or some tools to be able to track a little bit better the dwelling units and things of that nature on the, on the island. I don't think that was ever spent, and the need, I think we've kind of demonstrated when we were trying to reconcile dwelling units and things of that nature, that maybe that would be something that we could utilize. There are a lot of packages out there that basically inventory down to some very detailed level, you know, the housing and the other commercial buildings within a municipality. We've only got 5,000 of them, but they're also very demonstrative as far as all of the details about that specific unit and the regions and streets and things of that nature on the island. It goes beyond just the dwelling units. I think we ought to at least keep a placeholder in there, and maybe we evaluate, you know, some kind of a package that might, planning department sort of migrate from the manual to the, to the automated, as far as being able to get data about our municipality. And again, it goes way beyond dwelling units. There are a lot of off-the-shelf packages out there, you know, be happy to talk to some, anybody about that, but we, I'd like to keep that $35,000 in there for this year to maybe take a look at something like that.
We do have $30,000 in the Building Department budget to allow for a new permitting software, but I think you're talking about something different that we could, that we could, you know, include for the next draft, for sure.
Okay.
So rental, we don't think that rentalscape is going to be...
It's a whole different, it's a whole different animal. It'd be something that Matt and his team would probably be using in the planning department.
Yeah, we could do that. Let's see.
Couple more highlights.
Just a couple more highlights. Lighting for pickleball courts, $25,000. The Police Department, you know, MedSafe, Pharma, Dropbox, I think the chief, and we talked about this at the public safety building, we get questions from folks about how to dispose medication. This would be a dedicated area for, for folks to be able to do that. License plate reader for the IOP connector, just for investigative purposes. There is one at Breach Inlet that, you know, the, both police departments share with the information. I think it could be shared by Sullivan's Island, but we are, we don't have the same capability at our connector, so we wanted to add that there. A second portable radar sign for traffic code control, we added one this year, we want to add another one, just keep moving it around and address traffic control in problematic areas. Let's see.
I have a question about the license plate reader software. How effective is that, and how often is it being used now?
I will let the chief answer that.
Thought he was going to get away.
He almost made it.
Sorry, Chief. Sorry, to call commands from the tower. So we actually use the, there's two answers to this. The one at Breach Inlet is through one company, and we are partnered with Mount Pleasant and Charleston County, who use the company that we would be recommending to use. We use it quite often. Anytime we have reports of suicidal individuals that have left the island or are coming towards the island, we can use theirs to see if they made it into Mount Pleasant, but we can never see if they've made it onto our island unless they come across the Hunley Bridge over here at Breach Inlet. So this would be something we can use for that. We've recently had trailer thefts and things like that where they leave, well, they come on the island first, and we would be able to get, capture their license plate before they leave, and then recover from there. The difference in the one that we're looking at and the one at Breach Inlet is the one at Breach Inlet ties into DMV, which means it picks up suspended license plates and things like that. The one we're looking at does not tie into the Department of Motor Vehicles. It is strictly for us to use catching vehicles coming and going from the island for investigative purposes, not to sit out here and try to catch all the suspended tags, but it would, it would alert to any stolen vehicles as well that were coming on the island.
And it's coordinated with Mount Pleasant?
It's actually, it's a statewide initiative. I can, I can tap into these license plate readers all across the state for any department that has them, to include other states. Like I can tap into Georgia and some other states to, for investigative purposes. But it does, it's the same company that Mount Pleasant has. The only thing they don't cover is coming onto the island or leaving the island. If it comes into Mount Pleasant from anywhere else, they've got it covered.
All right, and I just want to highlight, just, you know, you see the addition of several softwares for maintenance and inventory and infrastructure management. We're trying to get away from the manual operation of some of these processes, and I think it would bring a lot of operational efficiencies in several departments, so you'll see some of those allocations related to that.
I had a comment on that. I did see a lot of systems and software change, including, you know, just our general software for all our computers, but a lot of, and I encourage you that, but my only question is, is are you taking, these things aren't easy implementations typically, and are you taking on too much by putting so many in one year? But I'll let you be the judge of that.
Yeah, and we, you know, we have had a great, great working relationship with VC3 as well, and it's been, you know, wonders what it has meant for our operations to have their expertise, and they advise on all of these programs, and we work really closely with them, and so I think we're, I think we'll be able to manage.
Before we move on this page, could I have one more question, please? Y'all are going to like this one. So I look at the Recreation Department, and once again, I ask about power upgrades in the Magnolia Room and the room beside it, from the current amperage, it's wired like your living room, and so if somebody came in with like a special needs for more amps, like theater lighting or something like that, it, it has not been upgraded. I think last year, y'all told me that you did something in the big space, the gymnasium, but I am wondering, and I'm requesting again, that the entire building be upgraded to at least 400 amps per room.
I know we did, I think we are right, just the gymnasium, so I think what you're, you're saying in the other rooms as well, I don't know if that's already been done, but we can...
Who's here she comes?
We can, we can confirm.
I'd like you to know, because I ask about this every year for probably 10 years.
Oh, Carrie, can you come up here? Councilmember Ward was asking about the upgrades to power?
Amperage in the Magnolia Room? Well, I know the gym, you told me last year, the gym.
Right.
But I'm saying, my original request years ago was just the Magnolia Room and the room next to it, I think it's what's supposed to be...
The Magnolia Pump Room.
Yeah.
Are those not updated yet?
There are, I know you said last year, the gym was updated.
Correct.
But if you wanted to have a performance or something that needed some power, respectable power, then I've been asking for years to get that room, it's a fire hazard, for one thing, if you do have somebody comes in with professional lighting, to a minimum of 400 amps for those rooms, and I'm just requesting that be put in the budget. It's a minimal amount of money, and if, if we could get it approved, would you be in favor of that?
Yeah.
Maybe just wrap it in the AV upgrade.
Yeah, we can just increase, increase that $30,000 for AV upgrade, just add, I don't know, 10,000 more to allow us to do that in those rooms.
Feel like a little kid at Christmas, I'll never and ever ask for anything else.
You don't have it in hand yet.
Until the next time. Till the next time. Well, now, I may not be sitting here.
I thought it was just the gym, and I knew that that had been done, but we can, we can look at the other rooms as well.
Well, I appreciate the gym being done, I'd just like to get the whole building finished.
And we're increasing amperage?
Amperage, to a minimum of 400 amps per room. Like your standard wall side has 20 amps. We used to run electrical cords all over that building, and we were just blowing the place up. Years ago, because it, it just, it's, it's not, it originally wasn't, the electrical contractor didn't take this consideration. I'm worried about what happened in the past, just like to correct it for the future. I would imagine it'd be somewhere south of $1,000.
It's on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
35 grand? I ran a theater, I ran a theater and upgraded for less than $1,000 to 500 amps.
How long ago was that?
Four years ago.
All right, it's on the list, let's keep rocking.
Can't somebody come to your house for less than $1,000 bucks?
All right, so, oops, sorry, go ahead.
I might know what I'm talking about.
I want to just...
I'm all for it, isn't it? I might.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to highlight the bullet point under General Government and Building Department, holiday lights, holiday tree installation and storage. So that would be a change from prior years. The way we do it right now, we have our own storage unit that we pay, and then we have a hodgepodge of employees from every department pitch in to install the lights, you know, the entire rec staff is tied up for several days installing the Christmas tree in the season, and we have secured a quote to have all of that contracted out. It'll be done in a few days. So there is a little bit of, there's going to, it's, it's about 5,000 more than what it costs today, but it would just be incredibly efficient in the installation of the holiday lights and the Christmas tree, and they store it. So there's some savings there when you look at the overall time of all the staff that's involved in coordinating that and executing it. So staff is really excited about going down to this.
Is this, they're supplying all the lights and everything as well, or is this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then we're adding lighting of the... Yes, and then we're adding lighting of the oak trees. At the end of the connector, you see, you know, examples of the oak trees completely lit up. You know, their branches and all that. I thought that might be a nice addition for the holiday season that we, that we do that. So that's a new change from FY '23.
Why don't you just combine those into a one-line item?
They may be two different, I think they're.
Two different spots.
Maybe two different spots in the budget, but at the end of the day, we can do that.
Okay.
And I just, again, wanted to highlight what each of them would cost.
Perfect. So what's not in this budget, these three items, any others you want to talk about that we haven't hit on already? The paramedic program, the chief has talked to public safety and to our workshop about. We'll look at the cost and the funding alternatives for that. The outsourced parking management. We'll look at, again, the revenue increase, reduction of the BSO operating costs and what that'll mean to the city. We talked about increasing the STR license fees. We've got some analysis we'll look at on that. Are there others that are top of mind for anybody that you haven't already brought up from a project standpoint?
Just a question on revenues. I don't, I don't know when the last time have, have we gone through and taken a look at franchise, you know, outside franchise fees and other things like that. I'm just trying to brainstorm on maybe other sources of revenue that we may or may not have tapped into compared to either ourselves as far as updating the fees or looking at other municipalities on where they're getting fees. And how that's, I think, I think it was looked at a few years ago during one of the budget cycles. But I'm wondering if that exercise might be worthwhile, just to tap all the revenue sources, just to make sure that they're current.
So on the, just to quickly answer, on the franchise fees, the ones that we do levy, they're already maxed out. To, and when we did that analysis, there was one that was at 3%. Then we increased it to 5%. So we're already there. You know, one franchise fee that has been talked about before is on water and sewer. Certainly, we can have a conversation about what that would look like again and bring that analysis, updated analysis to you. At that time, we increased the license fees and building permit fees. And we can certainly take a look at that and see, you know, how do we compare to other communities? Are we competitive? Certainly have done some work related to the short-term rental license fee that were adjusted at that time. And we would entertain a conversation with council about if it, if it's the will of the body to adjust that to cover some of the expenses associated with increased enforcement and managing, managing that. But yeah, we can, we can dust that off and have another conversation about it.
When's the last time we raised those fees on licenses and contractors and things like that?
I believe it's 2019, 2018, 2019.
That's what I thought. And it was quite a substantial increase, wasn't it?
I think it was a 50% increase.
Yeah.
Just similar, it's not a specific project, but I did notice a lot of our, like, insurance costs going up quite a bit and those type of things. I don't know how often we go out and get an RFP for our insurance and other services like that. But may think about that. I, you know, sometimes brokers get a little complacent with your business. And it's good to test the market. So especially on insurance, but there could be some other items that we also have. We just renewable contracts every year. They may want to think about going out and getting some RFPs and check the market.
Just information to offer for property and liability and workers' comp. The city's insured through Smith and Smurf, which are agencies of the municipal association. So there's no profit motive there. They're just, you know, kind of. We can go out for RFP, but I would just caution anybody looking at the results to understand that a broker might, a broker with a profit motive, might come in and lowball it. And then you get in and, you know, you see a lot of increases. We also get, if the, if the pools at the municipal association are overfunded, they have a meeting every year, they will refund a portion of the premiums paid. So, and that's not included in the budget. So that's just information.
And they typically do have a refund that goes out, don't they, with Smurf?
I think one of the other has been pretty consistent. I think it must be Smurf, which is the property and liability. The other thing that is driving some of that increase is the city's, well, no, it's the, our experience modifier has gone up because we've had some claims.
On workers' comp or not on product, not on general liability, right?
Maybe the auto liability.
Auto, yeah.
Didn't we just get a pretty substantial refund last year for insurance? Or something came in, might not have been insurance, but a six, I believe it was six figures or something that came in.
You might be thinking about the, the general assembly reimbursed the increase in the retirement contribution. Employers retirement contribution.
And that would have been a six-figure number.
But that's not something we can count on every year, so it's, that's not included in the budget.
Right.
And there's no increase this year, so that's kind of a mute point.
Other projects or thoughts you want us to look at, including for Draft Two?
The only thing that I would like to, you know, when you talk about the franchise fees being maxed out, franchise fees in the past, I've always voted against them because it just goes right through to the residents. The residents end up paying more to cover it. It's no, it's no net increase to the city. Or to the residents. It comes right out of their pocket. It's like another tax.
I don't know whether this is the place to, to bring it up or not. But we are talking about sponsoring a new event for next year. And where, where do we put that in the budget?
It's ATAX.
Okay. Do we, I mean.
This is Martin Luther King.
The MLK reception that we've been asked to host.
I mean, it would be tourism money of some form or fashion.
We're going to be talking about it at the city council meeting. And hopefully it'll be in the budget for next year. But it's sort of, it's the cart before the horse because we haven't even discussed it yet as a council.
Any idea about an amount?
Minimal. I mean, it's going to be nickels and dimes.
10, 10 grand max, yeah, I think.
We'll make a note of that and then based on the conversation next week from council, we can incorporate it in the next draft of the.
Okay, I think that's the way to do it. Thank you.
What else? Any, anything else project-wise or adjustment-wise, what you've seen? We're going to talk more about the paramedic and parking and license fee. The only other thing I would bring to your attention, we had conversation at our workshop around ATAX money and using, using a budget proviso through our lobbyist, based on their recommendation, to take back essentially some of that 30% that we have to give to the Explorer Charleston. You all have seen the email from our lobbyist and the pushback they got based on that potential path that they had recommended. Given that, we've had meetings with Explorer Charleston. They're certainly willing to put in their budget the walkability study, for lack of a better term, and also a tourism management study through, through College of Charleston, that they would help us develop some strategy around tourism management. So those two items, they're putting in their budget out of the 30% bucket for next fiscal year. So we kind of get to the same spot, just in a different path, if you will.
We are going to take a different approach than that presentation that we had, right? The other one that, when we had the fellow from College of Charleston talk to us about short-term rentals, it was from the investor side and not from the community side. So whatever we do, I would hope we would do it with, from a community approach.
Yeah, that was a total different.
Okay.
If I understand correctly, they were saying that it's probably best not to pursue the $400,000 for.
Not, not do a budget proviso, based on the feedback they were getting from Ways and Means and other legislators. Legislators.
Okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off if that was really.
No, no, just the layman's terms, what they were, what they said.
So let's look at paramedic program. And you've seen some of these numbers before. And we're going to look at the millage work that Debbie and staff have looked at it. So this is option one, if we direct hire the six positions and the equipment and supplies that they would need there. You could see up top, fully loaded by position, it's roughly $96,000. You can see five, six-year cost there, out to $873,000 in year three, I mean, in year six, sorry. Option two, the outsource, you can see those numbers there, starting at $761,000 up to $925,000 out in year six. Again, and chief has been very clear on this both times he's done the presentation so far. You know, the outsource arrangement includes transport. The direct hire does not, but it certainly helps our staffing and call times to get to our residents and visitors. So just want to make sure that's top of mind for everybody when we're looking at these two options.
Okay, do we, do we pay for ambulance service in addition to this since, under option one?
No, that, that option one, the ambulance would still be provided through the Charleston County EMS.
Just like today.
Model, just like today.
We don't pay for that.
We don't pay for that, okay. That's what I want to make sure.
Not directly, I mean.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Everybody pays taxes that ultimately.
Okay, but it's not a budget item.
On the flash, we pay for it.
Under option one, our paramedics would get everything stabilized as much as they could. Then the ambulance would come over from Charleston County, pick them up, get them to, transport them to the hospital.
That's correct.
Under option one, it's expanded service as well. Now we've got paramedics on the beach and for drowning and that type of thing that we wouldn't have under option two.
Right.
Yeah, the staff would be able to respond to 100% of the calls that the fire department gets every day. Not just EMS, which would be limited to an option two if you outsourced it. It would just be equipping an ambulance and a QRV to just respond to.
And option two, we'd also have to house an office for them. The reporting function would not be through our chain of command. We discussed all that last week, but it seems to me that there's just, you know, option one for me works best.
And approximately how many calls would this address per year? Just as a grounding stat, chief?
So I know that EMS calls for last year were about 437. And I think 50% of those required advanced life support. So at a minimum, you would.
So it's quite a few per month.
Yes. And just making sure, when you look at the breakdown of what we're using for each firefighter, for the employees, that assumes the $6,000 for the second set of bunker gear and uniforms, which we wouldn't be spending every year, right? So the 96 is inclusive of that 8,000, that we would only, you know, incur every, every few years. So that's why when you look at year one, you know, the prior presentations that you've seen, we were rounding it up to 100,000 for the FDE cost. We broke it down so you could see what the impact would be just from personnel, salary and wages, and then uniform equipment. And then additional supplies that we're assuming a $20,000 placeholder for incidentals year over year. And then in year six, you can see how we bring up, again, the equipment for the replacement of the heart monitors. Assumes a 20% increase of cost, again, being conservative.
I don't know if I asked this question last time or somebody might have. Do we have a feel for how many of these calls that might be answered and just ballpark are related to residents versus non-residents?
I don't know. Chief, could you, could you answer that? Come over here.
Just, and I'm not looking for stats, I'm just ballpark.
We do, we do have, in the fire department, and if you can see in the monthly report, we do, we do have the ability to distinguish between those that have an IOP address and those that don't have an IOP address. So I think, I don't know how much work I'm volunteering the department to do. But I think if, because we have that data, we may be able to, to break that distribution down.
We could attempt to get that data for you. We should be able to get that, I would say, by close of business tomorrow, as detailed as we can get. I don't know how.
Do you think it's split like half and half or?
What we have now though, chief, what you reported in the monthly report shows the resident versus non-resident calls. Can you tell us what the proportion is for that?
Well, each month is a little bit different. Because I would have to, I don't want to speak to it without giving you accurate information.
It's on, it's on the dashboard, the monthly dashboard.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I can pull it up myself and look at it, but I haven't.
When you can get to it, chief, it's fine.
We'll talk about this in a council meeting.
I didn't mean to put you on the hot seat.
No, but we'll, I will get that information. I know a lot of you have asked for that and that's something we try to track. With our new RMS, we thought it would be a little easier with image trend. But it's, that reporting system has a lot of canned reports, but it's proving to be a little more clunky than we anticipated. So we're still working out the kinks on it. But I'll work on that and get it as soon as we can.
It might help to know why Scott's asking that question, if it, if it's a lot of non-residents.
I don't know if there's a funding opportunity to.
Funding opportunity for ATAX.
Stand right there.
Hey, Amy, will you go to slide 65 on the budget so we can look at funding alternatives?
Yeah, I think you had it in there, didn't you?
There, so just to ground you real quick, the first panel on the left is our current millage rate with current debt schedule and the effect at different values, if you will, from a housing standpoint. The middle panel, it says fiscal year '24 millage with no increase, reduction of the rec center debt. So this was, this is what would happen if we didn't do anything with regard to millage rates. And you can see the decrease there because we're pulling off one mill for the rec center that's come, that is maturing this June. To the right panel is increasing two mills to bring in an additional roughly half million dollars to fund what you just saw from a cost standpoint. So we'd use millage increase, tourism money and general fund money to essentially pay for this. Is one, one way to do it, not dictating anything, just putting up a proposal as far as an alternative on what we could do. So again, you can see what it does to different appraised values on the houses, what it would do at a residential level or a non-full-time resident. And you can, you can see what that is to the far right. So I'd love reactions or different thoughts or comments around this approach.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my initial thought was, or would be, that if this is a priority for the, the island, the residents and the visitors, I'd, I'd like us to go through and maybe prioritize, you know, all, a lot of the items in the budget, whether they be capital or operational, and see where this lands in a prioritization standpoint. I'd hate to go to a tax increase for something that we believe to be a priority, where we might be able to look at other revenue sources or even expense delays, deferrals or eliminations to cover it before we went to a tax increase on the residents. That's kind of where I'd like to see if that's possible.
And just to add to that, you know, we, we were going to talk about potential increases to licensing related to short-term rentals and what could be generated that could maybe cover expenses that we're already including as part of our general fund forecasting without any increases. I mean, that's an option. We've also talked about some potential savings in our overtime budget of about $200,000 to $220,000 a year by having additional personnel that could be reallocated to that. And certainly some component of tourism money that could be reallocated for the support, a portion of this initiative, knowing that a lot of the calls that the police department, uh, fire department responds to are from visitors. So there's.
I'd like to ask the finance director if she can remember the last time we had a tax increase.
I believe the last time there was a reassessment coincided with when the city issued some GO bonds. I believe there was a small increase in the debt service millage then. Does that sound familiar to anybody else?
Yeah, yes, to me. Probably just Jimmy. It was a while ago. We always figured out a way, you know.
Regarding prioritizing budget and finding other things in the budget that we could delay or eliminate, you got to make sure it's not a one-time thing.
Understood.
Because this is not a one-time thing.
I understand.
And to John's point, early on in this conversation, we could take a strong look at our revenue projections, understanding that maybe we're being too conservative. So there's some room there. There's some. There's some argument to be made for using ATAX money for some portion of the six.
And we're doing that now as well, right? We use ATAX money for some of our police and fire.
Yeah, we covered that.
Sounds like, it looked like we had a couple hundred thousand surplus on the ATAX that potentially could go to this. I, I think for a half a million dollars, we could probably, it's a pretty small amount in the overall budget. I don't know if we ought to be looking at just this single project. I think we should go everything and look at everything all over, recast this thing, and let's see where we end up without a millage increase, our rate increase, before we have any kind of final decisions or discussions around it. And, because we've talked a lot about, a lot of things changing, including some things going the other way if, you know, on the, on the, on the cost side. So I think we ought to recast this thing and take a look at it and, and then come back and talk about what's needed. I, I think this is a very worthwhile project. I think we ought to pursue it and find a way to do it, but I'm not really a sign off on a millage increase till I look at everything altogether again.
So this is five-hundred thousand, you know, that we, so this assumes you find two-hundred-ish from some other spot, and that could be ATAX, or, or it could be just a general fund money because this budget assumes that there's a, over a million dollars of excess revenues to transfer to the capital projects fund. So you could lessen that number and, and cover this. But then you have to think about what's the down-the-road consequences of not funding the capital projects fund to that high of a level. But then again, every year we seem to end up a little bit better than we thought, so that money goes into the capital projects fund. So there's a couple of different ways to skin this cat.
Yeah.
You know, in a draft two budget, do you want to include this?
So we can see what the implication would be?
Without the, without the millage increase?
I would like to see it without the millage increase and see where it ends up, and then we can always come back and say, oh, look, we're not willing to, you know, it's too big of a loss, we need to do something on the revenue side here or somewhere to get more revenue, and so we take a look at increase in the taxes.
Or we could even try it for a year.
Mm-hmm.
And it turns out that we don't, you know, we end up, because we've, sorry, we've got some wiggle room, it sounds like. So if it turns out that it didn't have as much wiggle room as we thought, then we could go on to millage increase, right? I mean.
That's a decision council makes every year.
Seems like that would be a more conservative.
And maybe between now and the next cycle, we can take a harder look, I think, like you suggested, Debbie, maybe we look at the conservative assumptions on the revenue side. I'm, I'm all for conservative revenues, but maybe there's some room there that if we take a look line by line.
Isn't that millage increase question usually finalizing addressed in late summer, early fall?
Well, we, we typically decide on a funding.
Right.
Level, and then in the fall is when you actually determine what the millage rate's going to be, but.
Right.
We don't have a lot of swings, so whatever decision you make now will kind of flow through.
Yeah, and I, and I think to a lot of this conversation, you know, this is a new, important, enhanced service, you know, the city's looking to bring on. Desiree and I had a real quick conversation this week or last week. I mean, I, I think there's some resident input we certainly need here before we go down a path of hiring and staffing and buying equipment. You know, I, I want to make sure it's what they want, I mean, that is important to them. So I mean, I, I think we ought to do some sessions again at the rec center just to let Chief put it out at a high level, what it would mean from a resident standpoint. You know, they don't need to be involved in, our presentation at that point doesn't need to be involved in the nitty-gritty of all the options, but if we went down the path of we're going to hire it, you know, what would it mean for, for a resident standpoint? Kind of what you asked last week, Blair, around from a resident standpoint, what does it mean quicker, better, faster, more staffing, all the good pieces? So I, I think, I think there's much more work to be done here. I know, Chief, when you put out the timeline, we were looking at an April implementation at best next year by the time we could get it up to going, staffed, trained, and ready to go. And I don't think that's a problem, I just think we need to decide how we're going to get there.
I guess, I may be speaking out of turn on this, but training six paramedics for our staff or, or finding six paramedics, I think we've got three that said they were interested on, on staff, that need to be trained for eighteen months. We need three more that may or may not be, be able to be. I think there's, there's a shortage of paramedics right now, so it's not, I don't see us getting fully staffed for at least a year, for sure.
That's, that's assuming if we're able to recruit six new paramedics.
Yeah.
Even if we can train existing personnel to become paramedic, we're still replacing that paramedic with a firefighter. So the, the addition to head count happens regardless, we can.
Right, right.
Staff it with existing personnel.
But I think, I'm just trying to think, if we go down the road like what we're talking, what we're discussing here, I don't want to get halfway into this and find out we've made a mistake and can't afford it and end up. I think we, we, we will benefit from even just trying, just because in the end, we will have paramedics who are trained, even though they may not quite be, be able to use all of their resources here because they don't have the certifications, I guess, that are needed for the island to use them. But the one thing, I guess, I don't see on here that I'm, I'm trying to figure out is if we increase the millage as this table shows, not the parking.
Yeah.
Not parking management.
I know, I'm on to the next one.
What, okay, what would, what would it amount to for the typical homeowner here? What, how much more would it be?
Look on page sixty-five of your budget.
The bottom right corner.
It's over there.
So you can, yeah, if you look at the page sixty-five.
Taxpayer increase, oh, over here.
Taxpayer increase at different appraised levels.
So for a million-dollar home, appraised home, you're looking at an increase of forty dollars for primary residence and sixty dollars for second homes.
I don't think we're talking, I can't imagine they'd even notice. That's round off.
That's where it starts then.
And, and, you know, again, from a timing perspective, to Jimmy, your question, you know, we set millage rates kind of now from a funding standpoint, but you don't officially set them until the fall.
Right.
We've got one mill coming off, if you were going to do something, not, not a bad year to do it in. But again, let's take a second look at our next draft based on all this conversation around revenue or the expense side.
Okay, one more thing too, and our millage rate is far lower than any of the neighboring communities.
It's on that page.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
It's on the bottom left of that page.
Could we also maybe by that next time, just take a look, Debbie, what, what, what's the typical increase? I guess you, what you're saying is if we increase the assessment, we'll take the millage down, never mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just want to back up real quickly. What's the difference between an EMT and a paramedic? There, there is a difference, right, in terms of qualifications and certification?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And with the paramedic being the superior training and?
That's the top level of pre-hospital care.
Right.
The, the paramedic level.
The reason I ask is I read an article recently, I don't know if it was in the Post and Courier or somewhere else, about, I guess it's Charleston County having extreme turnover with EMT and maybe even paramedics, which might be a recruitment opportunity for us. I mean, I don't know what's going on throughout the county, you know, unless it's because we're having to cover so many different geographic areas at any given time, just putting additional strain on them or not, but, I mean, there might be an opportunity, who knows, that we could, if we go this route, that we could staff up even quicker than we initially thought.
More to come.
Okay.
All right. Next item we talked about briefly last workshop was parking management, Chief, thank you, and outsourcing that. On the left-hand side of this particular page, you can see our current scenario as far as where the revenue comes from, from a parking standpoint, whether it's ticket, lot, or meter. You can see the expenditures associated with that and the net to the city. On the right-hand side, you've got two options, and the difference is really just how the outsourced company would get paid from a percentage or kind of a flat rate, if you will. And you can see the rough difference in the net to the city is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. You've got this in your package if you can't see the screen. So Desiree, what do you, what do you want to add there?
Just want to add a couple of things. So, you know, the, the outsourcing fee structure options that you see on the right side are just one, an example of one proposal that we have received. There could be others for, you know, obviously, you know, the city can make a decision to secure a contractor that has responded and been selected in an RFP for similar services within the last year somewhere else on the state. So that's how we picked, you know, two of the, of the companies that we've directly engaged in this conversation to help us understand what this would, would look like. So this is just two options from one, one of the proposals that we received. We selected the one that had experience in similar beach communities. We thought that that would be a good start. In terms of the expenditures that we would be potentially saving, it would, they wouldn't be our expenses, it would be the parking manager, manager expenses. You know, we're assuming out of the ten BSOs that we budget every year, that we would keep three. We're still in conversations about what the appropriate coverage would be to ensure that we have the entire beach covered. It may be, we may be looking at potentially four BSOs instead of three. So this is still sort of fluid as we conceptualize what this would look like should the city move in this direction. We are assuming in both outsourcing options, assuming a ten percent increase in revenue. We think that that's conservative. We won't know, but you assume that with targeted enforcement and maybe additional resources, we could see an uptick in, in our, in our parking revenue. You can see there that in total revenue, we are including parking ticket revenue, and that's very difficult to project, right? Because we obviously want, we want compliance, and the goal is, once you get a ticket, you won't do it again. So we are looking at, again, FY22 actual revenues on that, but we, we don't, we just don't know, right? We, we're making a, a whole, a whole lot of assumptions here. Overall, when you look at, in both options, both having a management fee and an incentive fee, this model assumes a six, six-two percent of gross over seven-fifty, plus a monthly management fee of a ten. Overall cost of the city would be a hundred and thirteen thousand. The city would still end up getting around one-point-three million dollars.
Desiree, can you explain what the four-hundred-and-fifteen, how's that four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand calculated? I'm, I'm not following the, the.
So they, you don't have it here, but they provided a pretty detailed expense budget. It's personnel, equipment.
Is it fixed or is it based on revenue, percent of revenue?
It's fixed.
Okay.
These are existing companies that exist now and do this for other municipalities?
This is one company with two different ways to pay.
Two, okay.
Correct. So, yeah, we can, we can provide that, council member peers, that list of expenditures. Let's see. And then option two is just a flat twenty-nine-point-five percent over total revenues collected. And again, assumes a ten percent increase in revenue. So right now, total net income to the city from parking, it's roughly a million four. You can see that difference potentially.
And just curious, what kind of contract length do these firms?
Five years.
Five years, okay.
So again, the overall cost to the city is not a line item we have to expense, it's just reduction of revenue.
Reduction of revenue.
Based on outsourcing the services.
And there's no state oversight or permission needed from anybody if a municipality like us decide to go this route rather than doing theirselves?
Well, it would, you, council would have to approve.
Right. Well, obviously, council approval.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it, no, it would be, it would be just like any other contract, outsourcing contract that you all consider. This does include enforcing the residential district and, and beach parking districts. So even though those areas are, are free, free parking right now, we still enforce parking regulations there. So they, they would, they would do that enforcement instead of the city. So it's not just the enforcement and management of the paid parking areas that we currently have at Front Beach, it's enforcing parking management island-wide.
It's all encompassing, okay?
Yes, sir.
They collect ticket revenue and all that?
Yes, sir.
So just, just curious, do they give you any indication of, we're, we're assuming a ten percent. I'm guessing that they're pretty good at this. Is that pretty light, do you think, or do they, did they advertise more than a ten percent increase?
I think it's light.
Yeah.
Then yes, they do. Sorry, Desiree.
Yes. We want to be conservative, so.
Okay.
We, we've asked the, this particular company to come to the next public safety committee if that's the will of the group. I know that at the last workshop, it was put back in the, in the workflow of the public safety committee. So we can, we can have a contractor come in and, and be, you know, we can ask some more specific questions about what this would look like and what a timing, implementation timeline, timeline we would, we would see for next season.
So let's do that.
Okay.
Got it all lined up for y'all.
Okay. I just have one question about, well, a couple of questions, but the first one is on enforcement. I know there was a problem we were, when we were talking with the county, and it might just be because it's the county, that our officers were not allowed to issue tickets on county property is, but we can assign the right to, to issue tickets to these kind of parking consultants?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good. And this, I guess the thing I, I apologize, I didn't look at this in advance, but if our gross revenue now is a million-six-sixty-seven, and it's costing four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars in contractor expenses, I guess I'm not seeing how the overall cost to the city is, you're just saying is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. I'm, I'm not really seeing the math on that.
Look at the left-hand side, million-six in revenue, two-fifteen in current expenses for a net to the city of a million-four.
Okay, so you're saying all of these expenses would go away?
They would be incurred by the new, by the parking manager, and you can see that they're assuming almost doubling that amount in their projections.
Okay, so the increased cost to the city would be the one, the one thirteen thousand for the first one?
It's just reduced revenue to the city, essentially.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And not included, I'm sorry, not included in the expenditures is a lot of the time, staff time spent in managing parking. We included BSOs here, but there's a lot of time that happens up, you know, in general government with parking ticket, and all that would be, would go away and would be managed by this outsourcer. So it's pretty low when you look at the two-thirteen because it's, you know.
Yeah.
It doesn't include all, all the time, staff time that is devoted to this operation.
And Scott, to your points, I mean, they would take care of all the front-end stuff for, I mean, we, this is true outsourcer.
Yeah, this seems like an opportunity. I mean, those intangible costs you just described are probably costly.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably double them.
Couple people in this room, it's almost full-time jobs on most days.
We could focus on speeders then.
I think it's a good idea to explore this.
I do too. Jimmy, you're good with bringing this to public safety?
I'm with the chief, I'm a big fan.
All right, thank you. So last item we talked about at workshop as well, increasing the short-term rental license fees to help pay for some of the additional staff. We've talked about what was, throwing a couple of different ways you can do it, rental registration fee paid by, sorry, you can do a registration fee or increase a scalable license fee based on gross income generated. If you do the registration fee this way, everybody has a, has a piece of it, and the two-hundred-dollar registration fee would generate approximately three-fifty. So if somebody came in, paid the application fee, decided not to get the license, we will still have at least a two-hundred-dollar collection from them just for our staff's time and such, so.
Now, that's an annual increase?
Yes.
So every year they pay the extra money?
Correct. Thank you, Blair, yeah.
Every year, every year when they renew the license, they would pay them?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a, it's an application fee every year, registration fee.
Well, and it would be the same if you decide not to do a registration fee but just increase their, the base fee, that, that, that rental license fee is incurred every year.
Okay, so the two-hundred dollars is not the total fee, is it?
It's the additional.
It's the additional, and what is it now?
We do not have a registration fee currently, we just have a base fee and then a, a fee associated to each a thousand-dollar gross revenue after two thousand. So that's, it's essentially a scalable rate.
So this would actually increase the base fee by two-hundred dollars?
So you could do it both ways. You can either increase the base fee by a certain amount, and that would only be paid for those, to those that submit an application and actually go full. and actually go forward with the application and get a license and pay the, pay the invoice for the license. A registration fee would be paid once an application is submitted, whether or not they end up getting a license at the end of the day. So we spend a lot of time processing applications, and then we have about 30, I would say, 30 or 40, maybe I'm making that number up, I'm looking at that list, of folks that submit an application and then just never respond.
I think it's the semantics I'm getting confused about.
It's an extra $200 a year. I mean, that's all it is.
Anybody who submits an application and a, and a renewal would pay.
Correct. If you go, if you go the registration fee route, if you just increase the base fee, it's only paid to, by those that go through the entire application process and get a license from the city.
Just once at the beginning?
No, every year. Every year.
$200 every year per license that we would issue.
So anyone who applies for a license, whether they end up get, buying, getting it or not, would pay the full amount?
The $200.
Just the 200, if you have a registration fee.
Let me try this a different way.
Thank you.
When you apply for your license, you come in, you give $200. Then they go and do a bunch of work and say your license is ready. Then you come back and you pay another 350 and you have your license, every year. If you don't come back and get your license, you still pay the 200, and they keep the 200 for all the work they did.
Have a question, please.
What he said, yes.
Can we call it a registration license?
We can call it whatever you want, it's $200.
The thing about, the thing about it is, is fees.
Okay.
Local, state and local fees, or what they call fault, salt, are not included in salt. They're not deductible on the tax return. Now, all that changed since the Schedule A deductions, of course, are, is only limited to $10,000. So most people bust it, but if you call it a tax, then it's a tax and license. Fees, like stormwater fees are not deductible. Of course, the businesses, they're different, but I just, you know, just, it's just calling it something different. You know, maybe a, a term might be tax.
We're going to call it a fee.
So you can't deduct it on your individual return?
Yeah, but I mean, we can't call the application fee a fee and the registration fee a tax.
Registration tax, it's not a tax.
It is a fee.
It's a user fee.
Oh, but it's money coming out of somebody's pocket.
Jimmy, as I understand it, if you're actually using your house as a short-term rental, then it would be an expense to that business, and it would be deductible anyway. So it would only impact people that are buying a license and not renting their house.
On Schedule A, instead of E or I.
So that, I like that, because now we're telling people it's not deductible unless you actually use the license.
Yeah.
Right.
So what, what do we want to do here? Take a, what do we, make a decision whether we want to include this into the budget?
In the next, next draft.
I think we should.
Yep, yes, definitely.
And I like the registration fee.
I do too.
That adds a little incentive in there.
Yep.
Douglas?
Can I just say my piece on the registration?
Come up here to the mic.
Not to belabor it, but, and at $200, and as it was mentioned, I think 20 people, 30 people don't pay it. It's kind of $6,000 to the city. But it's multiple transactions on thousands of licenses additionally to get, you have to send them an invoice for the review fee. They then send the money back. We then tell them, okay, now we're ready to take on the, the application and process it. So I would just say, Desiree's going to kill me.
Just sold that, I'm going to kill that.
Don't decide yet whether it's an application fee or, or just an increase to the base fee.
We can still put.
For $6,000, it's a lot of additional work to do. Two transactions.
We can put 200.
You just put 200 across the licenses.
Across the butt. And, you know, one of the things that we would like.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point, and it is, I think it reflects how the, the processes are very inefficient in the way that we collect money and, and process applications. That's why we have money in the budget to just have a new system to try to streamline all of that. Because it, it would be, it is very manually heavy when it comes to the, to what the staff needs to do and the way that things come in and they go out. So to me, I, with the way that we're doing it now, would be, would be an added challenge. But if we streamline it all, it should be much simpler, even implementing a registration fee.
Douglas, you waited. Once we streamline, I'm good with it.
You waited two hours, but that was additive.
May I ask, Douglas, does anybody ever make an application and you deny it?
No.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to include it on draft two, however we get there, 200 bucks a year.
See.
Next, yes?
Sorry to beat this to death, but we had, there's a percentage of income that we also.
That's separate.
Okay, and that, because why don't we just say $550 for everybody who submits an application and don't have the two-step process?
Well, that's what.
That's what Douglas is suggesting.
That's his recommendation, that you just increase the base fee.
We're going to get $200 extra. Staff will figure out how to make that happen easily.
Yes.
All right, next steps, adjust budget based on today's feedback. A lot of adjustments, revenue, expense, I think we've got a lot of work to do. Hopefully, we can have all that ready by the April workshop. That's only three-ish weeks away, give or take. We'll need to have the first reading at the April council meeting. We'll need to have public hearing and second reading at the May council meeting. Because as you probably know, we have to ratify it no later than June 30th, since our fiscal year starts on July 1. Does that sound like reasonable next steps? Desiree, yes?
I think we got it.
I feel a comment.
I was going to rehash my notes. I will verify against the minutes, but just to make sure they're buying on all this that I think I'm going to add or subtract. We're going to add 12 months actual to the revenue page on the PowerPoint. I'm going to check the payroll budget for FY24 because it seems low. Add 30,000 rec grant for the outdoor fitness court, which nobody mentioned, but I saw in the notes, so I have to add that. Move the 1 million City Hall construction estimate into FY24. Add 35,000 to the building department in the general fund IT line for software related to short-term rentals.
Well, no, it's related to, it's not a short-term rental package.
Related to?
It's just overall management of the facilities and, and units on the island here. Yeah, it's a, it's a property management thing, not a, it's a different package.
We're adding 10,000, even though that's probably way too much, to the rec AV line to cover the increase in amperage in the Magnolia and Palmetto rooms. Add 10,000 for an event, then state ATAX. And increase parking, or reduce parking revenue by approximately 50,000 to assume that we move to outsource parking for the second half of the fiscal year, which would be summer 2024, right?
Or faster if possible.
And then add the 2,000 per short-term rental license on the revenue side. And I'm going to say, I'm going to look at, take a hard look at assumptions in revenues in the general fund.
And maybe, Debbie, even run a scenario, what, what do the revenues need to be in order for us to cover these things? You know, on, on the assumption, is it taking the business licenses from 80% to 90%, or the ATAX from 90% to 95%? You know, whatever, when you run it, maybe we can take a look at what does it need, what does it need to be? And if we can't find it, maybe we look at the expense side of things, if it's unreasonable.
Okay.
Even like on the Marina Fund, Debbie, there was like no variable income on the Marina, on any of the tenants there.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I was saying on the, on the Marina Fund, the revenue side, there was no variable income on any of the tenants there. I, I have to believe that's not going to be the case, especially this year, coming here.
The saving grace on the Marina Fund, though, is we could increase those revenues.
I know, and it won't, it won't impact.
It won't help out on this general fund, but good point.
Just a question about next steps. We, the plan is to review the draft two at the regular workshop? Or do you all want to have a second budget-specific workshop in April? Regular workshop?
I say let's go with the regular workshop. If we feel the need, we'll pull something off after.
We can always add at the meeting.
And we'll, we'll try to get this out at least a week ahead of the workshop, so that y'all have some time to review it.
When are you retiring, Debbie?
And we're, and we're adding to that, that 10,000 line item on increased amperage. If it's over 10 grand, Jimmy pays for it.
Sure, I've been doing this 30 years. I might know a little something about amperage.
And Jimmy, how about if you get, if it's less than that, you get the difference?
Uh, yeah, you can say that on camera.
Good?
Yeah, all good.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
No further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All off record at 5:08, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's serious. I've been in business 30 years.